Bill, if you can hear me, just so you know, we can't hear you out here. Bill, just so you know, we can't hear you out here. I don't know if you can hear me or not.
Good evening, Mark.
There. Now I can hear you guys. It's been a while.
Okay. Mark, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear the podium.
Mark, can you see us?
Yes, unfortunately.
I guess so. Everyone's mic is on?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I have six o'clock. I'd like to call the March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two City of Credit River Planning Commission meeting to order. Would you please rise for this pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thanks for joining us, everyone, tonight. Tonight, we have, just so the, all the commissioners up here know, Karen is dialing in, so she's not here tonight, but Cindy Nash, our city planner, is here. And Mark Seemers is also dialing in, and so he can hear as well. Everyone should have received a copy of tonight's agenda. We have really only two things on the agenda tonight, and that is two public hearings. Does any commissioner want to add anything to the agenda? Can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda? Can I get a second? Second by Christian Wolf. All in favor of approving tonight's agenda, say aye. Aye. Motion carried. Since we have nothing on the consent agenda tonight, I was talking to Karen, we'll approve last month's meeting minutes in April. Okay, so we have nothing on the consent agenda, so we can move right along to both public hearings. Tonight, the public hearings are related and pertain to, they're related to one another, and they pertain to a proposal to amend the text of our zoning ordinance related to permitting businesses to operate in a residential zoning district, and also a conditional use permit for the property that's located at seventy-seven sixty-five one hundred seventy-fifth street, near Credit River. All planning commission members should have received before tonight's meeting a copy of the staff memo prepared by Cindy Nash, our city planner, regarding the proposed text amendment to the zoning ordinance, and exhibit eight to the Credit River City app development application, a site dimension plan and grading drainage erosion control utility plan for the proposed, am I pronouncing this right? Messing, Messin Brink Office Building. Staff memo also prepared by Cindy regarding the proposed conditional use permit at seventy-seven sixty-five one hundred seventy-fifth street, a boundary and topographic survey for the Messin Brink construction, the Messin Brink preliminary office site plan, and a staff memo from Shane Nelson, our city engineer, regarding the construction plan. So before I open up the first public hearing, and the first one will be related to the amendment to the, a text amendment to our zoning ordinance, Cindy Nash could give us a summary of what's being proposed?
Sure. So, as you mentioned, these two items on your agenda are related to each other, but I have advertised them as separate public hearings, so I recommend that you take them separately. Now that said, given that they're so interrelated with each other, I do expect comments to probably overlap a little bit.
Sure.
Just by the nature of that. So the first one that we'll consider is the tax amendment to the zoning ordinance. Mr. Messin Brink applied for that tax amendment to the zoning ordinance. Typically, what you see is tax amendments that are originated by staff, or maybe yourselves, or the city council. But residents are also able to apply for those tax amendments to the zoning ordinance, and then we process that, just like we would a land use application, basically. So what they've asked for, this property that, that he owns, is zoned urban expansion reserve. And what the tax amendment was supposed to do, in your zoning ordinance, there's a table twenty dash four, it's that one, has many, many cells on it, and it contains all the land uses, all the zoning districts, and says what's allowed in which district. If something isn't allowed by permit, you know, already permitted, conditional use, interuse, whatever, it's not, it's prohibited then. So what they're proposing is to replace that prohibited use designation in the UER district with a C-ten designation in cells E twenty-one and E twenty-two. What those pertain to are commercial accessory buildings. Commercial, there's two different types later on in your ordinance. Those commercial accessory buildings, one type is, and these are in the commercial district, but one type is that if you have an existing commercial building, so we'll use like the veterinary clinic, for example, they could come in and they could ask to construct an accessory building to their commercial use. If it's under thirty percent of the gross square footage of the main building, that would be just an administrative site plan, so that means it's something you guys wouldn't see. We would approve that with just a willing permit. The second one is a conditional use, so that'd be an accessory building that would be thirty to seventy percent of the size of the principal one in gross square foot, and that would be by conditional use only. And then that would go through the process for a conditional use permit. You would consider that, and the city council would make a decision on that. And then both of those are modified, but it has to be on property of ten acres or more. So what they've asked to do is to place that commercial accessory building designation, both sizes, as conditional uses in that UER district. Right now, the UER zoning district is one that is, it's really a holding category, if you will, for the future when water and sewer are available to properties in Credit River. And we, we keep it that way, but so does everybody else in the metro area until those properties are ready for that greater intensification, and then they might be rezoned to a different category, like one, or commercial, or something like that, and that would follow the guidance that's in the comprehensive plan for the future, but until that water and sewers there, along with any other infrastructure, we don't rezone those to those categories, because you don't want somebody to prematurely try to develop.
So today, it's residential and agricultural, pretty much, at least in that area?
Basically agricultural, if you're in that UER category, or residential. Anybody that has an existing parcel can build one home on up to forty acres in that category right now. So looking at the proposed text amendment, and the memo explains a lot of this in much more detail than I'll go into here. It's a difficult tax amendment, because it's a commercial accessory use, and there really aren't any commercial uses that are permitted in that UER district, so on, you know, how can you have an accessory use if you don't have a principal use for that to go with? Kind of the main analysis associated with that. Second, a lot of these properties, the vast majority of the properties in the UER district, in the future will be residential of some sort. So if you allowed commercial accessory or principal buildings in that UER district, you know, they could be in quite a few different neighborhoods that they are existing in Credit River today. So specifically, though, related to the property in question, it also doesn't appear to me, the proposed amendment doesn't appear to meet the needs of what they're hoping to do with the property, which is to construct the building that's the subject of the next public hearing. A few things to note is that the property by deed is probably ten acres, but the ordinance also has provisions that says if you, if part of your deed goes into a right-of-way, that area is excluded from the acreage, so it's really nine point something acres, and doesn't quite reach that ten.
And there's never a wiggle room. I mean, it's ten. We cut it off at ten. It's not like, well, it's so close to ten, like.
Right, tends the line.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, you get into exceptions, you know.
Right.
Okay.
And then a few other things are that, of course, that amendment is related to an accessory use, and this is really a principal use, what is desired to be constructed. Really, what should happen if you wanted to allow what's proposed in that district is that some combination of things would need to happen to allow genuine commercial, probably actually industrial, in that district. Because this is really a contractor yard for a business, along with offices. And that, right now, would only be permitted in your industrial zoning district. Those are kind of the two main things of why the proposed tax amendment doesn't, in my opinion, fit what is, what they're seeking to try to do on the site. I know that John is here this evening, so I definitely want to give him a chance to speak.
Sure. So why don't we let John do that, Mr. Messin Brink? If you would like to step up to the podium to make sure that the microphone is on by pressing the power button for a couple seconds till you see the green light. There you go. Yes, thank you.
I don't disagree with what Cindy told you. You've all read the report. I've read the report. I've been working on this for a couple months. It would be a unique change, not really a change. I've been there thirty-five years. I look out in the audience, most of these are my neighbors, or people from the area. I've been there thirty-five years. I got a conditional use permit thirty-five years ago, or maybe thirty. Cindy looked it up. I hadn't seen it in twenty or thirty years. She looked it up. What I did do is drove down to the county to see if I'd ever had a complaint registered against me in thirty or thirty-five years of being in business, and none. Township has never had a complaint. I've never had a letter from anybody telling me that I should shut my business down. I started as a farming business there years and years ago, and got the conditional use when I started a construction company. And I've been there ever since. It's not impossible to do what I'm asking, not even close. I'm four hundred feet from commercial property right now. I think a lot of the neighbors would probably rather be commercial than forestory apartment buildings, which is what the designation is right now. I, and I don't know, I didn't work on that. I wasn't consulted about it. I don't think anybody was, but that's what our designation is right now. A year ago, fifteen or sixteen, maybe seventeen acres went into commercial, and that corner is four hundred feet from my corner. I think these lines are pretty much designed to move. They're not designated as a positive line. I've never seen it. I've done this for forty-seven years. I've done a lot of developments. We've built a lot of buildings, and they've all stemmed from that little building that I'm in. I've got two buildings there.
We, it kind of started when we wanted to put a little office on it, wanted to add ten feet for a break room and a conference room. To meet with the guys in the morning before they left, I found out I couldn't get a permit to add ten feet, like twenty feet of building, on the building that I've had there for thirty-five years. A lot of the rules that.
When was that, sir?
Sixteen months ago.
Okay.
I tried to apply for it, and they said I couldn't do it.
Did you apply that from the township? Yeah, okay, okay.
So granted, there's been a lot of things that have changed over the years. I mean, I've lived in Credit River my entire life. Most people in here can't say that. Rob can. There's a few people in here that can say that. I haven't. I've seen a lot of changes. My business and my family have grown incredibly. And I'm sure people can tell you the guy can move somewhere else, and granted, they probably could. But I've been here my entire life. My business has been here, and I don't really want to leave.
We're not adding employees. I'm trying to put a building up that I can put everything inside. That's really what I'm looking for. It can't be done through this portion of the government. You're, you're not a body that can do this. The council is the body that can make these changes, and granted, they can do it. There's a, there's a way to do it. I'd have to make a few changes on my application, but it would be strictly up to the council at that point to either decide to grant this commercial zoning, which I'm fine with. I know there's issues with the roads, but I built that road. The road that we're on was built my father-in-law and myself, and that was years, well, forty years, maybe a little longer. I started that business as a grain, this one we farm. All the neighbors around here brought grain in to our location to drive. So that road has had semis on it every part of the year up until ninety-one, when we quit farming, and we went strictly to construction. I don't think there's been any major changes to it that I know of. I didn't see any. Leroy comes out in the spring, he looks at it, and it gets five loads of ground, ten loads, whatever it is, I don't know. It's never really changed, and we've never destroyed. My new use is an old use, not changing. All I want is a building. I've got two buildings. There's areas out there that properties that have shoot seven, eight, nine, ten though. I've got two, and maybe the neighbors don't want me to continue. I don't know. How many people here want me to shut down?
They'll get a chance to speak if they want to speak when they, when you.
Why would you have them come up here? Most people don't like speaking in front of crowds.
Well, we'd like to get it on the record. Would you press the power button now?
It's shutting off. Let's see batteries.
Yeah, this one's got a full battery. But anyhow, I've been to enough of these meetings that you can sit right where you are, and we can sit here till midnight, and have everybody come up and say the same thing, either for or against it. Not here to waste your time. What I'm asking for can be done if the City of Credit River wants to do it. If they don't want to do it, it can't be done, but it has to be done with a council action. I would love your recommendation to move forward and do whatever I can. You read the report from Shane. I've got a letter right here from our engineer. I mean, we don't design these before we build them. Nobody does. I did enough work to know that we could put this building up, take care of the stormwater, and what we need to. The road is another issue. If we have to do something with the road, fine. I think there's a couple neighbors that would agree with me if we have to do something extra fine. I don't think sewer and water is going to be here in my lifetime. I've been here a long time, and I know it's getting close, but there's still a lot of hurdles to get sewer and water out there. It would be crazy to put all these streets in and tear them up in twenty years. I've been there thirty or forty years, and we've never touched them. My business runs with about seven to eight people. Five or six come into the office for fifteen minutes every morning. They get a service truck and they leave. Our equipment comes in maybe once or twice a year, with the exception of Bobcats. None of our dozers come home. I've got a backhoe that's home right now, only because it had to come in for service. It sits on our job sites. I don't buy it to park it in the parking lot. We use it every day. It doesn't commit. It doesn't create traffic on the roads. I mean, it just doesn't. Our traffic is from pickups and smaller trucks. We have a lowboy that maybe goes out maybe twice a month. We hire almost all our equipment moves, almost all of it. So the, the traffic, to me, and I think the neighbors would attest to that, is really a small, small portion. The main thing is, is the building, the way it's presented right now, they're looking at it as an accessory, but in your ordinance, you don't, you don't pick which building is which. I think we can get around that hurdle without too much work.
How, and how would you suggest you do that? You, you really have to change your ordinance.
Yeah, well, I could, I can use that building as my primary building, not my accessory, because, and I think Cindy would agree with me, it's not in your ordinance. It doesn't tell me which building is which.
I would agree that, generally speaking, what was the principal could end up becoming an accessory, and then something new could be a principal. The bigger issue here is that the nineteen eighty-six conditional use permit was for a storage building.
Right.
And was not for a contractor yard. And that, so what the actual principal use is, has never been permitted.
And I agree with her. I'm not, I'm not disputing any of this. What I'm asking for is just a fair shake to try to, to move this forward, and I'll do what I have to. I'll get whatever grading. I mean, I've got letters here from our engineers. I mean, I think most of the people know me. I built Nate's building for him a year ago. I mean, they just rezoned his property. It's four hundred feet from mine. That's why I'm having a hard time with this. I've been here my entire life. I want to put an office up, one building, and I'll die with that building. I, I don't see this as a major, major hurdle. I'm shocked on a few things that I found out in the last sixty days, because I've done a lot of homework now, and shame on me for not sitting at these meetings. That will change. I've been a longtime resident, and I will have input. But I don't want to leave. I can take my grandkids, and I can go to my office on a four-wheeler. If I leave to one of my other developments, that's gone. I don't want that.
Okay.
And I'm not looking for any favors. I'll do what I have to do. But I need a starting point.
So what's going to be stored in the building?
We'll put racking in there. We've got, if you've driven, you guys are probably driven by our shop, which you see outside will go in the building. It wasn't like that for a lot of years, but in the last couple of years, with COVID and everything, there's our, our industry has changed totally. It just has, and we're doing what we can to survive, and I don't want to be a bad neighbor. It's, my wife would be the first one. She wanted to be here tonight. I told her, no, don't come, because she's not as calm as I am. But I want to clean it up. It's not hard, but it takes a building to do it, and we have a, I don't know if anybody even seen the building here, what we're proposed to put up.
So question for you, why seven dock doors if they're not going to have, seven garage doors if you're not going to have extra traffic?
Put everything in. I don't have to figure back open.
Why seven doors?
Yeah.
It's designed to drive through, right?
Oh, okay. So not, not a lot of racking. Gotcha. Okay. All right. Okay. Right, yeah. Anything else, John, you want to say?
No, do you have any questions?
We may in a little bit. I'd like to next, then, if you could have a seat, and, and just, we, we like to follow the process and procedures and protocols, so we, that's why we do it the way we do it. We don't ask residents to talk before we open up the public hearing, so, okay. So now I'm going to open up the public hearing. This is a time for residents to provide comments pertaining to this proposal to amend the zoning ordinance. And we're only talking about amending the text of the, the zoning ordinance. We didn't receive any written comments tonight, Cindy?
No, we didn't.
Okay, so I'm going to open it up for the people that are here tonight. If anyone would like to approach the podium and make any statement related to this proposal, please do so now. I would just ask that you write your name and address on the sheet of paper.
Yeah.
Oh, sure. You know, otherwise, I can bring my, I can, yeah, what?
No. It's not going to change if you like my questions.
Okay. Your first part is addressing this zoning.
Could you just say your name, and just so?
I live across from Oz boarding stable.
Okay.
Murphy Boulevard.
Okay, thank you.
Instead of an address, it doesn't tell you really where I am. So this first part here is you're talking about the zone. So I have a question with takes this in general in the zone. You just said that he doesn't have the right to the ten acres, because the right-of-way isn't his.
Right.
Where's his property deed at? You generally know?
I, I couldn't answer that.
It's the middle of the road, and the county has been given the right-of-way. They haven't been given the plan. It should be credited with its whole ten acres, because unless the county wants to come in and buy this right-of-way from everybody, they don't own it. So I don't know if you guys were ever involved in the process, because I don't think those rules were so evident that I moved here twenty-six years ago, and I addressed this issue with a few people in the county, Scott County.
It's not a private road, though. It's a township. It's a city road.
So Cindy, maybe you could address this.
Sure. So, yeah, it's a city road, not a county road. The provision in the city zoning ordinance, though, that talks about how, for the purposes of area calculation and setbacks and things like that, they're but any portion of somebody's deeded land that is actually a road, which happens a lot, is considered to not be part of that acreage that's counted. So the setback comes from the road right-of-way.
Is this?
Okay, so that is in the, that is in our ordinance, sir?
And it wasn't Scott County's ordinance before as well.
And do you know when that ordinance went into effect?
I don't know when Scott County went into effect. Credit River adopted their ordinances just.
A year ago.
Months ago.
Yeah.
So I've talked to the county that years ago. And back then, this road on Murphy used to be the county's. And Credit River has gotten it back. And now Credit River's changed from a township to a city. So when did that ordinance go affect on his road? And see, my road is right teed in there. As far as, I don't care what the county made for an ordinance, till they pay me for my land, they don't get to discard it. You know, you, you say you got an ordinance where he doesn't own part of his land. He owns ten acres. I don't care what kind of ordinance one of them, that's a piece of paper. And he should get credit for his ten acres on that issue, just like anybody come in. Because I tell you, if you go down there and you ask the the tax department, how much are you taxing them on? They'll say they're taxing them on.
I, I understand your point, sir.
Tax statement when you give.
Yes.
So you guys can't have it two ways.
Well, I, I.
You know, and I know.
I, I understand your.
You know, but did the city adopt that ordinance when we changed from a township?
We.
You're calling one hundred seventy-fifth a city road? And then what's Murphy then? Is that, that used to be a county road? And now?
I don't know. I don't know the history of all the roads, but I'm sure that it's a city road.
Both of them are city roads and this one is on one hundred and seventy-fifth.
Yes.
Yeah, well, see, I, you know, like so people when they got ten acres, they got three hundred and thirty feet that comes up to the road. But like me, I own a quarter acre this way and about five hundred feet the other way.
Okay.
So are they going to come in and nick me for?
We're, we're not going to do anything for you, your, your property, sir. Is there anything else really? Right, right.
But it, it applies to him right now because you're the guy who just quoted the order. That he don't own ten acres. And if you go and look.
We, we didn't, we didn't say he didn't own ten acres. We said that when you're calculating the area for this type of application, you, you exclude the. Sir, I'm, sir, it's in the ordinance though. Is there anything else that's? That you'd like?
Not under this part of the.
Okay.
Discussion.
Okay, well, thank you very much then.
Yeah, wow.
The, the, the answer is that we, we're following our ordinances. And the ordinance is say that the right of ways do not count when you're calculating acreage. Well, I pay for a lot too that I don't get the right of ways on my lot too, and I pay for the parts that they could take away from me.
No, um. There's really, in that regard, nothing's changed from what it was like when Scott County did the building. So there, there are roads all over Credit River and all over every community. Where the road has been there, it happens to go over the beaded property of someone else, but it's still a public road. And the city, the township, whatever it is and whatever jurisdiction it is, under state law still has those rights to that road.
But be aware, be aware, these rules that they're talking about, they change as they go and we don't get notified on it. Because when I first got here, they, they claimed, and you agree with me, that my property was deeded to the center of the road where the state was, and that's the acreage it counted when I applied for a permit. Because I walked through this with Scott County. And I was talking to the lawyers. I was talking to the Department of Plaxo Land and you know, this is an issue with me when you, you, you don't have the right to, you know, if, if we give you the right way and the next homeowner gives you the right way. The, the government doesn't have the right to come back and say, no, uh, it doesn't count anymore. It doesn't exist when we decide we don't want it to exist. But when we want to tax you, we're going to tax you.
I think if I can interrupt you a little bit. You know, when we're talking about this tonight, we have no other, we, we can't decide to follow or not follow rules. And we can't decide to make exceptions, no matter how long people have been residents here and your, and yours, no complaints. Those are all good things. Coming from my own background, I spent a lifetime in both residential and commercial development all over the Twin Cities. Trust me, I've been in enough meetings with municipalities where I struggled with the rules. But yet the rules are the rules. And I think the biggest thing, if we as Credit River, especially as a city of Credit River, do not have some sort of established rules to guide us, then we are starting to deal with every property on their own merit. And as much as it may make sense, I'm not saying that it doesn't make sense. But I'm saying is that once we start making exceptions to the rules and Credit River is going to grow and it's going to expand. We all know that. Every property owner in Credit River, which is all of us sitting up here, are going to be saying the same thing. Well, if someone else comes forward with the, with the proposal, well, look at what you did here. Well, but it didn't follow the rules. So just hang on.
Yes.
So I'm just saying is as much as I grew up on a dairy farm, I've been in this area my entire life, so I understand what people are saying. But the fact is, we still, as a governing body, and we are a, all we do is recommend, is recommend things to the city council and eventually they make the decision. They don't have to take any kind of advice from us or not. So we're here tonight just trying to find out all the information that's set forth in front of us. And then from there, make a recommendation from here and yet the process still goes on. But I think as much as it doesn't make sense, and trust me, I've been in everyone's shoes here. I really have. I think hearing what you're having to say Cindy about the rules. They don't make sense sometimes, but the rules, the rules, the rules are the rules. And until we can change the rules, which means it's a much, when I look at rezoning areas in, in Credit River. We've got to be careful there because we're setting precedence. Everything we do up at this table and at the city council sets precedence for any future homeowner in Credit River. And so what we do for one, like Mr. Messenbrink here, would have to hold true with every other one. And there may be property owners that come in front of this board or this commission and future board meetings that it doesn't make sense and there's a lot of property owners against it. But yet we set precedence by what we do here. And I think it's not a, none of us are here in a popularity job. I'll tell you that.
Yeah.
So I think it's just, we have to make sure that what we make as recommendations tonight are across the board.
Okay, anybody who went in for a permit for a building, Scott County, Credit River, or for your township, if they had ten acres, they say, yeah. What is it? Thirty-two hundred? What's the square footage for ten acres? Biggest building. Well, no, it was always thirty-two hundred.
Let's, let's.
If you own ten acres, you can put up so such a.
Let's.
No, no, I'm not going to say on this. I didn't expect this.
We, we, we got.
I didn't expect this when I come in here, that this was going to come on. That's not why I came up here. But if you went in and you applied for ten acres, I thought it was a forty by eighty building was the most you could put up on ten acres. I can't remember exactly right, but I'm going to use that size. And huh?
Can I, can I have order? Can I have order? We understand, we understand your point. Are there any other things? We have other people that may want to speak and you've had ten minutes.
Think they might, anybody do mind?
We're just.
Okay.
But we want to listen to every, we.
Well, can I ask one question though?
Sure.
Cindy, Cindy, that is the ten acres. What other, are there other obstacles to this happening other than the ten acres?
That ten acre thing is, it's a red herring out there right now, honestly. It's because of the way that they've proposed the tax amendment to the ordinance, they put it in there as something that would be allowed on properties of ten acres or more. I was pointing out, and this is all, that it would have to be on property smaller than that, the way the rest of the ordinance is drafted. The real issue here that has to be considered is, do you want to allow? There's two different paths that could happen if the desire was to let Mr. Mezzanbrink build a building here. Path number one, which the city engineer and I have explored with him in the past, would be to do a comprehensive plan amendment and a rezoning of the property to industrial or commercial, whichever fit best. That becomes, so what I put on the screen here is our zoning map. The property, can't really see where my pointer is, but the property is located here on this lighter yellow area. So on the zoning map, that's zoned urban expansion reserve. And it's not contiguous to any commercial or industrial areas. The only areas that we currently have zoned for commercial are already developed commercial properties.
Right.
And, and the future land use map is very similar. We actually have two future land use maps in the comp plan. So one future land use map is the official one, which pretty much matches the zoning map. The other future land use map is the one that was referred to with the medium density residential in that area, which is not four-story apartments, by the way. The dark brown.
Right, but that's not where, that's where it is.
Let's, excuse me, let's just let Cindy talk and then everybody else can talk. So let's do it one at a time, please.
So it's not high density. His property is medium density in that future build-out plan. It's not official. It's for the purposes of iterative, iterative discussion with the Met Council on steward capacity. And we'd get a much closer look the next time the city updates its comprehensive plan. But so when something that a lot of people don't know is that the Met Council tells us that we have to have a minimum amount of residential density. So this version of the plan currently is balanced out once everything would be developed to have that minimum level of density that the Met Council has. So in order to have lower density residential in all of these areas, we did need to have a certain amount of medium and high density residential and others to balance out to this three units per acre that the Met Council says, so that these areas could be at two. The city can totally change how it does this by changing the, this density to a minimum of three units per acre, but then you're going to get smaller lots. So it's all a trade-off when you do that. Similarly, if you were to rezone and re-guide Mr. Mezzanbrink's property and like the others around his for commercial, you would have to rebalance this map again. So we would have to find other areas to put that medium density residential instead and rebalance all of those calculations for the Met Council. The other thing to consider is your roadway network. Now, this is something that we put in here without doing any special areas, smaller area studies at the time. But we do know that there are transportation issues in this area with serving some of these properties because they're not going to have direct access to twenty-one or to Texas Avenue because they're county roads. So you have to consider how these things can develop or not develop. We would, it would be difficult for staff to recommend in this particular area of the community to do rezonings or re-guidings outright because we haven't done that level of work yet that impacts this whole area and how all these other properties have opportunities in the future where those roads can go. Although connect, how they'll impact other existing residential properties on Kohlani, for example. The second pathway, that's the first pathway and we kind of had explored that, um, the first part of twenty twenty-one at some length. And of course, no application ever came forward for that. The second pathway was that he could propose a zoning tax amendment and that's a change, which is what he's proposing, a change to the text of the ordinance. That then, the way it's drafted would impact all the property in the UER district, which is that pale yellow in the northern roughly third of the city. I will tell you right now that there are people watching what happens tonight because there are people in the southern two-thirds of the city who would like to put businesses on their properties as well.
If they're over ten acres, right.
They're over ten acres. They maybe like to propose.
It doesn't matter, sir. Let, let her finish, please.
They, they would like to possibly pursue that same type of option. You may very well be seeing something coming up. The difference between say that one down there and maybe other properties in the area is that you do have businesses that are occurring, of course, right now. The ones that are permitted out there are associated with a principal single-family dwelling and then they're a home occupation. It tends to be quite a bit smaller than what's.
And that's what the two that you mentioned in your, in your write-up, correct? Like you're, you make, you gave a couple of examples on, on one hundred seventy-fifth. There's a, there's, there's two businesses close by there right now that have, but, but they're on a, they have a principal residence.
There are other ones in, in the city that have principal residences. And they have conditional use permits for the specific businesses that they're running.
Right.
As opposed to for a storage building.
Yep.
So that's, that's the primary difference here is do you want to introduce commercial into what's primarily a residential zoning district? This also, if you do that with the tax amendment, it also ties back to the comp plan. Because then that residential zoning district is no longer a residential zoning district. It's a mixed-use zoning district. And so anybody in that district could anticipate that somebody could use a property for a business purpose rather than a residential purpose as a principal use.
Right.
And that would have calculation densities on that Met Council density as well. We have to estimate how much of that zoning district we think would be commercial rather than residential and adjust all those numbers.
So what would it take for Mr. Messenbrink to be able to rezone the land to a point where there would not be a conditional use permit needed? So that it doesn't affect the rest of the township. He is very close to a commercially action garage door, commercially zoned area. So when I think back to what you're talking about, where all of a sudden the, the decision impacted here with his piece of property will affect a much larger scale within our Credit River Township of different areas that maybe aren't located so close to a commercial development.
Right.
What, in what ways? What are his options? What are other options, not only for his property, if all these other property owners around him are saying we're for it? Then could they all petition together as one unit to rezone their properties in?
They, they could all petition together, make an application to rezone to commercial. A couple of the challenges with that are going back to, so if we were to take this whole area here and re-guide and rezone it to commercial.
Sure.
Again, we'd have to move some of this multifamily residential somewhere else from the city.
Right. Which still could be done.
It could be done, but that's now impacting other property owners as well.
Yeah.
And it's a, it's a longer process. I mean, you, you can't just do it overnight.
It's not overnight. It's a much longer process. It's not a simple tax. It's not a simple amendment to the comp plan. It would be pretty intensive. The other thing is that one hundred and seventy-fifth along with Murphy are considered their gravel roads. So by state statute, they're five-ton roads. They're not ten-ton roads. And that's certainly something that's a consideration when we're looking at a rezoning and a re-guiding in the comp plan is, is there the infrastructure to serve that?
Right.
Can I finish my couple of sentences?
Okay, I'll give you, sure, go ahead.
Okay. So I didn't expect to hear this. You're not, your property is not included in the calculations.
Right, we, we understand that point.
I'd have phoned up on a little more. Everybody that's had ten acres and has a hobby farm has gone and applied for a permit for four thousand square foot building. If they can afford it and the county and Credit River said, yep, ten acres, you get four thousand square feet. If you got five acres, twenty-eight hundred square. I don't know what it is. But each time you go down in size, you can't have as big a building. So when somebody comes in and applies, you're first and you guys only for a ten-acre hobby farm and they apply for a four thousand square foot, foot building, you're going to deny them now because they don't have ten acres? That's what you're saying?
I think what we're saying though too is that, which the question that I asked Cindy here is that, is that the only issue with this? Are we just talking about just the fact that ten acres is nine point six four or whatever?
Oh, no.
Just hang on, just hang on.
I'm just aggressive.
Hang on, just what I'm asking. What I'm asking though is that, is that the only issue that's preventing this from happening for Mr. Messenbrink? If this, if this size of acreage is the only issue and there's not other ones that we're also taking into consideration, then it makes it maybe it's something we can consider. But what I'm hearing you say Cindy is that there are other, also other facts that have to be taken into consideration here.
There, there are a lot of other facts and really the key takeaway is that what was specifically proposed in the tax amendment? Because it's proposed that commercial accessory buildings be permitted in the UER district. That alone accessory building doesn't work because it's a principal building. And it's the conditional use permit that exists on the properties for a storage building, not for a contractor. So that's, it's a use question.
Right, sure.
And you know, a lot of times the solution for these one-off kind of things would be to do a variance and I'm just going to bring this up before anybody asks. It's illegal under state law to do use variances so that a variance is not a pass.
Very good. Is there any, sorry, are you?
So I, I just was bringing up the example. We're not giving him credit for 10 acres.
Sir, we've talked about the 10 acres. Is there anything else that you want to talk about? Or are you having a, do you want to?
You guys brought it up. I didn't bring it up. I heard you talking about not giving him credit for 10 acres.
It's, it's in our ordinance. So what, okay, we, we heard your issue. Is there any other issues you want to bring up or can we move on to other residents that want to talk?
It's still in your mind, are you going to start doing this to the other people that come in with 10 acres and apply for a building to put up for like their hobby farm? This is a hobby farm area, right?
I'm not going to answer any hypotheticals and a public, a public here, a, a public hearing is for you to make statements. It's not for us to argue about how I feel or how about you feel. So is there anything else?
I'm talking about the rules here. I'm not.
Do you have anything, do you have any other statement that you want to make tonight related to this application?
Not on the.
Text amendment. Okay, is there any other residents that want to come up to the podium? Great. Can we take the, um? We, we usually ask people to stand.
Well, we'll make exceptions for, uh, for handicap. Just state your name and address.
Rob Casey.
Thank you.
Good enough. You know me Steve. Don't act like you don't.
Not everyone knows you, sir.
So you're talking the residential so damn close to sewer and water. You're too away or what?
I didn't say it was close. I said it's planned for sewer and water.
So Brenton Leroy, it's so damn close. Why didn't we bring it up with 27?
Sir, can you address, can you address the commission, please?
We know what exactly you're talking about. We may not be as familiar as you are.
Good enough. Why, why, why didn't we bring the sewer line up with 27 this fall?
I believe that's a county.
Can't answer that.
What do you mean? Just hang on, just hang on. Cindy, won't you answer Rob's question?
Right. So sewer isn't coming down 27.
Coming through there or what?
Still has to be negotiated with Met Council exactly where it's coming down from the city of Savage. The preliminary thoughts are that it's coming from two locations. One is right around Hampshire Road. And then it would, the path that you normally take with sewer is going to be through the low point. So then it's going to follow close to the Credit River coming down and serving that eastern part of that future service area. The other part is coming down over by the Pearson gravel pit and then would wind through that area. The city engineer said he doesn't want it in 27.
Okay.
So in Pearson's mining, so that might be like 10, 15 years, folks?
There's different ways to do it.
Oh yeah, but you just told Mr. Messenbrink shit don't happen overnight. I'm sorry, when do you think sewer and water is getting to his shop if he don't build a shop? For residential? I mean, don't look at me. Answer me.
I don't know when it's coming.
Yeah, we, we don't know, sir. Anything, is there any other statements you want to make?
Well, forget yourself. I'm being real. I just asked you the question.
Appreciate the question.
Right.
I don't think you do.
Well, I think we're being honest with you when we tell you that we're not sure when sewer and water are going to get down to that area. Okay. We haven't, sir, sir, you're being a defensive. We haven't made a decision about anything. We're just asking the public to make statements tonight related to the application. That's what we're trying to do. Okay, thank you. Any other resident would like to make a, a statement tonight related to the text amendment proposal? Let me, sure, let me close the public hearing and then we'll, we'll let you, let you make your question. Well, the hearing is really for the residents to speak and then we'll give you a chance to, to, to speak after I close the hearing, okay? Any others, any other residents want to make a, a statement? Hearing none? Can I get? You can make a statement and we can address the question. Typically what we do is the folks make a statement. We close the public hearing and then we talk about it amongst the commission and the city planner. So if you would like, you come to the podium, ask your question and we'll make sure that it's addressed. Would you like to do that? You, but you just need to come up. What, what I'm, what I'm, I, I, what I'm trying to explain is that we don't have to technically answer your question. You can make a statement related to the application and your opinion of what's going on. And then we will discuss it within our deliberation. We will hopefully address your question, sir. Some questions I can't answer, but we're going to do our, we can do our best. What's your name, please?
My name is Jim Schlummer. I live at the end of 175th Street East. Apparently the county thinks it's Trump Tower and that's where I live. So I pass all these businesses. I'm curious as to whether, that I understand that it's against state law to make a variance or an exception for this property for the use that they're already using it for. For what buildings they can have on it.
Yep. So state law lets us do variances to all types of performance standards. So things like setbacks. How many, how many square feet of accessory building do we let somebody have? You can do variances to all those kind of things. What you can't do is a, a variance to allow a use in a zoning district that that use isn't allowed in. So what's, what we call a use variance.
So what, what she's saying in a sense is that what he's asking to do isn't required. It is not rec, it cannot happen in the property the way it's presently zoned. Is that correct? So the use studies recommend that you're asking for is, cannot be provided for or cannot be permitted in the land that it's his property is currently permitted. It's zoned. It's zoned. It's zoning is not correct in order to permit this building. So if the zoning would change, he could absolutely build it.
Or, or if you change that zoning protect in the zoning ordinance of what that zoning district is to allow commercial.
Which also affects the rest of the city.
Right.
Affects the rest of the city.
Even outside of the 10-acre parcel.
It would be outside of the 10-acre because to get to a tax amendment that would allow Mr. Mezzanbrink to do what he wants to do, it would open it up through that whole zoning district. And like I said, you will see applications then for the same.
Everywhere else. And that aren't maybe as necessarily as close to a commercial development as what Mr. Messenbrink is currently.
May not be, but do have direct access to a county road, which is a 10-ton road. So they'll view that as more. Because believe me, they're already making arguments to me. They'll view that as a better fit.
Understood.
Did that answer your question, sir?
Maybe. I, I'll just make a statement then because I, I'm not really sure what variations are, what uses are, what we have to change the zoning. But my understanding is that he wants to put a building up to put all the stuff in that building that's currently outside on a parking lot. I'd like to do that with a lot of my stuff too. I like to keep it in a building. So I understand that. If I have to drive by a building in a clean parking lot versus a parking lot with stuff all over, it makes no difference to me. I mean, this business has been there forever. I'm probably the newest resident on the street. I knew what was there when I came in. I'm not going to complain of cow poop smell. I'm not going to complain of horses. They were all there before I came. I, as, as far as I know, nobody's opposed to this. I'd be opposed to any kind of apartments or multifamilies living there. This is not offensive to me at all. And I don't know what has to be done to let him run his business. But I'm all for letting him do it and whatever you can do to let him do it.
Right.
And.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Kevin Casey. I live over on Casey Parkway. I'm a lifelong resident. Know the applicant. I'd say you'd be doing an injustice this evening to not approve his application. He does first-class things. Jim just said it. He'll improve some things there with the nice building. The scenery will look great. And I go back to, I wish me or Kostick was here or maybe is hiding somewhere. You guys want to be a city, be progress. And this man's trying to make progress. And if you don't allow this application, I think you're going the other direction. You wanted to be progress, so let's move ahead. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
So, um, what's this text amendment? If it was approved and it, it, it changed, could it in the future be changed again to something different? Or I mean, is this a permanent change?
So the city council can do tax amendments to the zoning ordinance whenever it wants to. It does them fairly frequently to adjust. Again, the tax amendment proposed, this would not allow him to build this building. So there would have to be something different. It would have to be to allow contractor yards in that UER zoning district. So then you could have a contractor yard showing up on any of these properties that are this color. That like, like yellow color.
Sure.
And so the zone, that's, that's part of the issue is that the text amendment proposed would not let him do this anyways.
Right, right, right. That was my understanding.
That was my only question. I just wanted to know if a text amendment can be changed and changed.
Yeah, it could be. I mean.
Okay.
It can be, but with this application, it's not going to work the way it was drafted.
Yeah, I can understand that. I just wanted to know how text amendments work basically.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody, anybody else want to speak tonight? Related to this?
Your name? Seventy-six, sixteen. One of those pink blobs is mine. I get there's rules. I get we need to follow rules. I mean, I get we have to have rules. But John wants to develop it now. It kind of feels like we're saving this property for something that we don't know if or when it's ever going to happen. Everybody keeps saying they don't know when sewer's coming. So just wants to sit in a stalemate for 30 years. He wants to do something with it now. We're a city. Let him do it. I don't know how to make that happen. That's your job, but I think we should let him do it.
Thank you.
I got one more. So you've heard from Dr. Schlummer from up on the road. I, Paul Dole's from 175th Street. I live right next to John's property. And I'll echo everything John said. So I'm private resident. I don't run a business out of my house. John does run a business out of his house. His business has never bothered me as his next-door neighbor. He operates exactly like he said. He runs a couple of trucks in in the morning. They leave. Maybe they come back later that day. Maybe they come back later in the week. Don't notice it. If I had a dozen houses next to me, if I had 100 houses next to me, I wouldn't like it nearly as much. I'd really like to see the building next.
Thank you.
I'm Ken Porwork. I live at 7750 175th Street East, right across from Mason and Construction. I'm probably the person most affected by this business. And I think it'd be a wonderful addition to Credit River and to the neighborhood. I would much prefer seeing all his equipment inside a building and nice-looking building. I look out my front door and I see a nice building there. I'm all for it. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Is there anybody else? Okay. Mr. Messenbrink, would you like to make your comments now before I close the public hearing based on what the residents have said?
I've got a document from my attorney and my attorney wanted to come tonight to explain it. And I told him, no. I don't operate that way. I don't want to be that way. I'm dealing with all my neighbors. And it doesn't need to be that way. If I need to change and he already sent me a letter that we should change our text amendment, when we did this, there wasn't really a format for us to follow. This text amendment idea came from the city attorney. I talked to Bob for about an hour and a half on the phone and he explained to me how to do it. And we put it together the best we could without an ordinance. And there is no ordinance. And I'm not arguing with Cindy. She's doing her job. She's got to follow what's here. But there is a way to do this. I can fill out a new application. The 10 acres was a big surprise to me. I mean, I didn't know that. It's going to affect a lot more people than me. Everybody that's got a barn that's 4,000 feet is probably going to be illegal use now. Because 90% of the roads are not platted in Credit River. Platted property takes the roads out when we sign the flats and the city accepts them. Meets and bounds, goes to the center of the road. It always has and it probably always will. I'm an exception where I live on Natchess. The road is crooked and my property is actually about a foot into the ditch, not to the center of the road. But it hasn't changed anything. I mean, we could talk all night about all these rules, all these regulations. But what it really boils down to is does the city and the council, and I'm not sure what they want to do, but do they want to work with the residents of this city? Or do they want to, basically they've shut down all of our property from the north side of 21 to Savage because of sewer. Nobody knows when it's coming. I've lived here my entire life. Believe it or not, the sewer line is on property that I developed. It stopped right where we quit. I did all the developments on 167, 165, 169. And the sewer line there is going to be probably not very critical because they're larger lots. Your sewer line at some point in time is going to have to take care of Creekwood and the Casey addition. That's going to be your major issues. The gravel pit is got the interceptor line coming through it at some point. I had a meeting with the gravel pit the other day because we're doing some business on a different deal. They figure they have 12 to 15 years left in Prior Lake. I don't think the line will come through there while they're mining gravel. So it's going to have to pick a different route. It's either going to have to go all the way to the west, which isn't feasible because it runs into Prior Lake. Or it would have to go back to the east where the other interceptor is off of Hampshire and the developments we did back then. And there's another issue here. We could bring a proposal forward to these boards to rezone a 30-acre tract that already connects the commercial property that's here that you rezoned one year ago. We didn't do it for one reason. The city attorney told me it was simpler to just do a text amendment. We've been in business for 35 years there. You can write things into the ordinance that the council would approve to keep other people. I've been, how many people have been in business for 35 years in Credit River?
Not in Credit River.
City of Credit River.
Right.
How many?
I don't know.
Rob's been here, my neighbor. I've been here. 35 years. And I've actually been here my, I'm 66 years old. I don't have a lot of steam left, but I do want to put a building up for my kids. And I want to continue my business. I started that business from scratch.
Sir, did you say, you mentioned that you, your attorney has drafted something, a new text amendment that you had talked with?
I didn't bring it with.
Okay.
I'm just telling you that we can and that's what Cindy brought up.
Quiet, please. Quiet, please. So, so would you be willing to withdraw your text amendment proposal tonight so we can try? So, so would you be willing to withdraw your text amendment proposal tonight so we can try and work out a way to do it the proper way? Because we cannot do it the way, what Cindy was mentioning, the way the text amendment was drafted, it's, we can't do it that way.
I, I understand that.
So.
We can pick different columns. That answer would have to come from Cindy because you're gonna look at the planning.
But my understanding is you talked to Bob, your, your attorney and Bob talked to one another and.
I've known Bob forever.
Right. I'm, I'm a little surprised in that this text amendment was drafted the way it was if both attorneys talked to each other.
We didn't change it and it was sent out. And I just didn't elect to change that because I didn't. My proposal would probably be more adapt and more complete when it goes to the council. Because that would be the final decision.
Sure, it has to come through us.
I know you're a recommending body. I've done this, I know.
Right.
That's the reason I didn't finish my engineering. And you read the report from Shane.
Right.
It isn't that I can't do it or don't know how to do it. I just elected not to spend ten thousand dollars to bring a drawing to you guys until I knew where I was going.
Right. There's ways around that too. You can, you, we can recommend things and then have contingencies on that recommendation. Yes, right.
I mean, this isn't complicated.
It, it get, you're, it's not complicated what you want to do and build that building. It's complicated in that we have ordinances and we have things that affect not just the people in the room tonight, but the whole city.
I understand that. And there's things, there's things we can do, and I think Cindy would agree with me, that there's things we can do with a text amendment. And make options in there that this is the reason why. It shuts a lot of things off. I mean, the ten acres totally shocked me. I mean. If I, if I knew that was a problem, I would have just withdrawn it. But I didn't, I've never heard that.
And your attorney didn't, didn't know that, that ordinance either?
No. I mean, I doubt anybody in this room.
But your attorney didn't, didn't read our ordinances?
No, we knew about it when Cindy sent the emails out that we, we have ten point zero four acres. That's what I pay taxes on. And it's not a platted road. It's a township road. I built the damn road. So it's not platted. My property line goes to the center, like Ken's, Paul's, everybody.
Yeah.
Nate, everybody on that road.
I'm not disputing, we're not, yeah, we're not disputing.
I don't want to get hung up on this ten acres because it doesn't, in my mind, it's the craziest thing I've ever heard. I don't know who would come up with that. I, I don't understand that part of it. If I was on the council, I would look at some of these ordinance maybe a little bit closer and try to figure out what they're gonna affect down the road. Because there's a hell of a lot of people with horses that live on ten acres that don't have ten acres anymore. And ten acres is a magic number.
Yeah.
That number was taken away by this council. Right here. The city took that away when they changed that going to the road and then changed it back. I mean.
I don't know what the council did. I.
Well, I'm guessing they changed it that you can't use anything that's in a right-of-way. That would make sense to me. Right, but I'm just saying. Yeah, it could have, I'm not saying it didn't. I'm just saying you have the authority to re-change it if that's what you want it. It, I'm not arguing here with you, Leroy.
So it sounds to me like there's steps that we still have to take. And my, my question to you before I close the public hearing, would you be willing to like withdraw this application?
I could care less, yeah. If, if Cindy thinks there's a way that we can resubmit, and she said there was, right or wrong?
There is always, okay. There is always a way that you could, you could come up with some text amendment that would allow for him to construct this building in that zoning district. You have to treat everybody fairly and equitably under the law. So you can't do a text amendment that only allows him to do it. It would be, everybody in that zoning district can do whatever we write in there. And we have explored a lot of that already in discussions. This, to me, is a big question of do you want to allow residential, uh, commercial uses in a residential zoning district that go beyond the scope of a home occupation?
Right.
That's really what the ultimate question ends up being. We could have spent hours writing some text amendment that would work along with the corresponding comp plan amendment, send that out to everybody. But that's a big question, is do you want to allow commercial in a residential?
Let me ask you this.
And, I'm sorry, I'm not quite done yet. And I do have to take a little bit of exception to something you said, John, because you made it sound like I sprung this on you in the last.
No, I, I didn't say that. When did I say that? I saw your emails. I said we didn't change our text amendment. We kept it the same. You didn't spring anything on me. I tried calling you five times today. I mean, there's nothing sprung on me. I knew, yeah, I'm just telling you I knew what was going on.
I sent a memo out back on February twenty-first to let him know all the problems with the text amendment. And then asked them to try to come up with some different amendment that I could present to you. So I do want you guys to know that we did make that attempt to do that.
And Cindy, if I could ask, could you put up that last slide of the city and show me again by making an exception here, how much of the rest of the city with that? With that cut, with that?
The whole gray, right?
Everything in the.
If it's in that UER district, it would be all similar properties in this yellow area.
It's a whole northern part of the township.
Yep.
All of our changes, the one change here would affect everything in that area.
Correct. And, you know, I, I thought about what, what could I put in a text amendment to maybe work?
Yeah.
And things that I've done in other places. And the suggestion of what could you do that maybe narrows it down so it's only applicable to this property or a handful of properties? But the things that I've used in the past for anything vaguely similar, um, like I had one community that wanted to allow people to slightly. Um, larger or more intensive home occupations if they had direct access to a county road. Because then you got rid of all the issues with the tonnage weight of the road and are they driven by other properties, et cetera, et cetera? And that seems reasonable. So in that community, they have a third tier of home occupations that. Are only eligible to those people that have that direct access. I don't, this is a dead-end gravel road. So I can't use transportation focus to try to narrow that down. The thought of using, because it's been in business for thirty-some years, doesn't work because the CUP is for a storage building. It, it's not, it's an illegal, non-conforming use as it is. So we can't recognize and give credit to that. I don't know how many there are up there, but.
And John, you understand that, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So coming up with that narrowly tailored text amendment. I think will be very challenging. And it would affect this whole UER area at a minimum.
Well, what would be the? Objection and rezoning it?
The typical thing we would look at, and we've talked about this, is that we would not want something that is a spot rezoning where it's just one property. So typically, we would look at several properties. Um, and then the other thing is, is, is the infrastructure there or will it be developed to be there to serve it? Developing that infrastructure is typically paid for by a developer rather than the taxpayers. And, um, it was my understanding when we had those discussions that you didn't want to pay to.
We've already paid for the road. I built it.
To make it a ten-ton road.
Yeah.
Well, I'm Murphy or one seventy-fifth?
It would be, well, both of them.
Anything to get to a, a major.
Yeah, yes. That's typically what we would look at.
Right.
Well, my question is, we've been there for.
Sure.
Thirty-eight years. Road has never changed. Do you think it's gonna change in the next week when we put a different building?
If we could have some quiet, please. We're trying to listen to Mr. Messenbrink.
You know, we don't have a problem. We can rezone if the board thinks that's a better option. I believe there's people in the audience right now that would move with me to rezone a complete thirty acres. And it would connect right to this. It would be one solid block.
Sure.
Going right out to one hundred and seventy-fifth street. Is that what you're looking for?
Well, I think with that, uh, I think that to me would sound better. And then it comes to the Met Council as to how do we rework some of those.
Rebalance the density.
Rebalance the density within the town, within the city, excuse me.
Right, and the city also would have to address.
Sure.
The road.
Right.
Yeah.
And I, I, you know, just knowing that, that area and you're, you're a fine contractor in business and you have all your neighbors' support. So I totally hear what you're saying. And again, I don't think any of us are arguing the fact that it doesn't make sense. I mean, just from a common sense standpoint, but then we also have to balance that with our rules and also balance that within the bigger picture, broader picture of the city.
Yeah.
Because as much as I would, I mean, your property here, I know where it is, but all of a sudden, so we make that exception. And we have a property owner down here or here or here that wants the same thing to happen. We can't.
It's not connected to commercial.
We already are. Is your property, your property connects borderlines to?
Would you rezone? Future rezoning, yes, as far as actually rezoning. Commercial, I mean, that would be the question.
And I think those are, that's for another time.
Right.
That we have that discussion, that discussion.
Uh, but keep in mind too, rezoning properties to commercial might impact what they can do with their property, if they're not intending to go commercial right now.
Correct.
So.
There's a larger scope of issues here.
Being a transition area, there must be some way to figure that out.
And I think that's why we have, uh, you know, a city planner zoning that, to handle those negotiations.
It's not like you go to bed one night and then wake up the next morning and have it all be developed. So there has to be some sort of a way to get from where we're at now to full development.
I totally understand. And that's why I think when we look at, we're in a really, we're an interesting time for the city of Credit River. Now that we've become a city and that we will start developing, we have to have some order or understanding as to how that happens. Otherwise, we will end up with a city that has all of these, twenty years down the ride, and I know you and I will be long gone maybe. But the fact of the matter is, we're gonna have this city that people are gonna look back on and go, where the hell is the city planning on this? Because there's everything everywhere. And I think that's what we. I, I agree. I, I hear what you're saying, and I think most of us would agree that with the zone commercial there.
Future map?
Yep.
That shows the commercial zoning. This is what you're looking at for your future.
Yep, absolutely.
Yes, it's part of the complaint.
This is the build-out future land use map.
Just hang on, everybody. We're trying to listen to about three different conversations here.
This map is the build-out future land use map. The real, the adopted future land use map, I know this is confusing and it's a unique thing to Credit River right now, is this one. So everything, the difference between the two is that right now, Credit River does not have what's called metropolitan urban service areas.
Right.
Except for these few properties that are in yellow. It's those four neighborhoods that are. Um, consist of pretty small lots on septic systems and the Pearson gravel pit. Um, that's. So the, the brighter yellow and the brown on the Pearson gravel pit, along with those other three neighborhoods. Four neighborhoods, those are the only places that right now, the Met Council would allow us to extend sewer to today as it stands. Because they want to make sure.
Septic still.
If there's that opportunity that we can take care of those septic systems that we're able to do that. The rest of it, in terms of getting to that build-out future land use map, will take some amount of time to negotiate with Met Council. A lot of it has to do with them including things in their regional plans as well. But right now and for decades, their regional plan has had that this whole northern third of Credit River is planned for future urban sewer. And it's all been in a holding pattern. This isn't something new since Credit River became a city or adopted zoning. This has been going on for decades.
Right.
So there have been restrictions this whole time.
All right, go ahead, John.
No changes.
So the other map that we were looking at doesn't mean anything. Is that what you're telling me?
No, it still means something.
What does it mean? I, I mean, that's, I'm trying to get to something here that makes sense.
I look at it, I look at that as a long-range.
So what does this map mean?
It's a long-range plan.
It's longer range. It's for planning purposes or looking at sewer capacity with the Met Council and that type of thing. This map would have been, would be refined in your next comprehensive plan. And some version of this would be come. Would take the place of that other map I just showed you and would show those MUSA areas.
Sir, sir, we're trying to hold a meeting. Thank you.
And would, um. Would show all those MUSA areas then. But that is something that this area in particular. Was going to need quite a bit of work and refinement at that point in time to figure out how we would do those road connections. What would really make sense given the two county roads in the area and the various intersections that exist.
Well, I've got just a suggestion. And I think it makes sense. I could be wrong, but. You've got this set up for future commercial. Right here. Although this map doesn't mean anything, it's printed. And I've already sued the county one time on a printed map and I won. Because a map is a map. You designed it, the city approved it. So this map is a map. It means something. So right now, you've got a corridor of commercial property on twenty-one that you'll never get access. You know that, the board knows that, and I know that. Twenty-one will never give you access in here. That access will come off of our road. It is so narrow by the time you get the frontage road in there, you're not getting any room to put the buildings in anyhow. I'm gonna need the offsets. So this zoning right here, to me, is ludicrous. I didn't do it. I don't know who did it, but it can't work. You guys should be able to see that. So take this zoning right here. Take this little blob, add it onto our property. And I'm sure Nate would probably rezon the rest to his. That might be fifteen, twenty acres. Put it over here. Take the same zoning and put it back. Now you haven't done anything except slop the map. That's all you've done.
I think actually what you're saying makes sense. It's just a matter of going through the proper steps. To do it. But I, I understand what you're saying. The frontage roads along the main corridor.
This can't work.
Sure.
I've been building commercial buildings forever.
Sure.
By the time you get the offsets from everybody within one and you put the streets in.
No, I, I hear what you're saying.
Look at.
Point well made.
I mean, take this, put it back where it can be used. If we get sewer and water in the next twenty years, commercial property is the easiest thing in the world to connect to. By far. You don't have four hundred homes. You usually have one to two sewer connections and you've got a six-inch watering. We put in our own wells on our commercial property. I would have to put one in at my new office because it has to be sprinkled. So I put my own well in. When water comes by in sewer, it's a very, very easy connection on commercial property. Residential, completely different story. That's why it takes a lot of planning to do that. I developed all this. All the way down. Large lots. The septic's aren't gonna be a problem. Look, it's gonna be up to those people at the time of sewer and water if they want it to connect. And you're gonna have the same issue back here. A lot of these people back here right now probably don't want sewer and water. Sewer and water moves with a contractor. Doesn't move with the city. The cities don't pay for streets and infrastructure. The contractor pays for it. Then the lots pay for the contractor back. That's just the way it is. And I doubt it will ever change because there's not money here to do that. I mean. To me, this is so simple, it isn't even funny. But I've got a vested interest in this that most people don't. I've been here for a long time.
Sure.
And when you tell me that thirty-five years don't count, I've got a lot of broken bones and a lot of sore muscles that tell you thirty-five years counts.
I don't think anyone said it then. I don't think it, I don't think anyone said it doesn't count.
In fact, I appreciate the fact that not only are you here in a long-term business, a long-term business owner and, and property owner of Credit, city of Credit River now. The fact is that you have all your names. So I'm saying, you're, you know, there's no complaints. As you've well proven. So all of that is well taken. And I don't think any of us, even sitting here, would even think of putting any kind of judgment against your character. Because you have incredible people here who are saying you're good. And all of your past record, track records that would prove that. And so I don't think any of that has, none of that has been, has been. And so I don't think any of that has, none of that has been, is being questioned here. What's being questioned is. Can we do what you're asking under the current. Orders and restrictions within our city that won't have a larger effect.
Yes.
On so many other property owners that we may not necessarily approve of. But with, by Mr. Messenbrink, if we make that choice, we have set a precedence here that. We could get sued then too, when all of a sudden we're not following things that we have said in the past. And I think that's what I appreciate everybody coming here tonight and stating how they feel, because they're all really valid concerns, they are, every one of you. And now it's a matter of how do we, as just an advisory committee to, to the city council, say. How does this work within the larger city? And I think that's our main question here tonight in regards to this, is, is quest, and what he's asking us to do.
So I think what you're saying. Is that. The commission would like to work with us.
Sure.
If planning can come up with something that doesn't affect the entire township.
Correct.
The city controls zoning. So why don't I just rezone that ten acres? That stops it right there.
It, it sounds very simple, but we can't do that. There's density balancing, there's.
We have to call an amendment to, the zoning has.
I understand that, but it.
You just did one right here a year ago. How did that go through?
It's one, we didn't have, we haven't done a complaint amendment.
You just rezoned Nate Krieger's about a year and, what, ten, two years ago?
Three, and that's four hundred feet from my property. So are you telling me that's impossible to rezone now?
That was that county that did that? I don't know. How they did that. What I'm telling you is that our comprehensive plan calls out. For every land, future land use, it says what zoning districts are applicable to that land use. And the only one that matches up with U E R is U E R for zoning. So the county might have it different where they're allowing commercial in the, in the U E R future land use, but we don't have it that way.
And we would need to change that.
And so we would need to, if you wanted to do that, we would need to change the complaint to at least say. That it could be U E R or commercial zoning.
Yeah.
So what we're looking at.
That would be as approved by.
City council.
And I think what we're looking at here tonight then. What we're really taking up is this proposal in front of us presently.
Yes.
And if there has to be something else brought to the table here, that would better satisfy. From a city's larger scale position here, then that'd be another proposal that we'll take under consideration. But presently, this is what we're taking into consideration right now.
Unless John wants to withdraw it, because.
That's my question, we're here and you can't talk to anybody anymore because of all the privacy rules. So you're here, and four of you are here right now. Just a, a simple question. What would you think about the rezoning of that lot?
We're gonna deliberate that after we close the public hearing, okay?
Can't really deliberate what you think about rezoning that lot, because that's not the question.
Right, w- we have to stick to what you applied for. That's what we can talk about after this public hearing ends. Then we're gonna talk, open up the public hearing for your conditional use.
I don't have a problem withdrawing. And resubmiting, as long as we have some kind of information. To move forward. I mean, you're, you've got three options. You can either table it. Deny it, or approve it, or no vote. That, I mean, that's it, there is nothing else. On both pieces.
I, I, and I think it would, my suggestion to you would be to withdraw this, because I don't think. I'm, I'm not, I'm speaking for myself, just based on my understanding. We can't approve something that's, that's against the ordinance.
I do.
But we wanna, we wanna make.
This was gonna be a tough meeting.
Sure, yeah.
But you gotta have a starting point. And there's nothing here. For us to follow, because I tried to do that with the city attorney. Should he help me as much as.
Right, I wish Bob was here tonight to, to, to help us.
I talked to Dave for now. He's at a planning commission, maybe he couldn't be here.
Right.
So.
And with that said. I think looking at where we're at right now, and I, John, I, I really respect the way you've con- conducted yourself here tonight, is that you're looking for an avenue. And so if we can just say, I would be agreeing with, with Bill here, that. It may be best to withdraw, and that doesn't mean you're stopping the process. What it means is you're withdrawing and thinking about, is there another avenue? And maybe there has to be conversations made with other people that, that can bring, help you bring forth what you're asking to do.
Well, I can't do it on my own.
No, no, and I think that's why we have as a city, planning commissioner, Eric, the. Cindy here, and there's other avenues to go. And I think, uh, putting, putting your money to best use in ways, is that. And your time is, is to create something that will work. That makes it much easier for us not to stretch the boundaries and say, okay, does that work? Does that work with the city council? If that's kind of what we're preliminary saying, yeah, let's bring it forward and get you on your way.
Well, the best thing that came out of this meeting tonight.
Yeah.
We didn't really get anything accomplished, but all my neighbors did.
Absolutely.
And I appreciate that.
I, we do too, thank you.
We know where everybody stands now. They don't need to come to thirty meetings. I don't wanna go to thirty meetings, but whatever it takes, I'm not gonna stop. I've had some tough things in my life, just looks like, I can't believe it's this hard to be honest.
Sure.
It looks like it's gonna be a little bit of a. Problem, but I think we can get through it. I'm hoping we can, but I'm gonna have to get some information. Engineering, I don't even, it's not even a consideration.
Right.
And we can make.
We can worry, worry about that later.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't need to bring that up with Shane, because I have great engineers. They'll make it work. I have to figure out how to get a building from you.
Right.
And the other option is, you want me to build a house there? Would that help?
That would not help, because a home occupation can't have more than one employee.
Well, now we're fired.
I'm just, I'm just telling you what the.
Right, and I think ultimately, everybody here, and I know we don't, um, we want to at some point in time, I'll go home tonight too, not to shut you down.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is, we're all here saying, okay, what can John Messenbrink take away from this meeting and saying, okay. What avenue do I take to get this done?
Yeah.
And that's it.
That's what I'm.
And so.
I'll withdraw both applications. I'm gonna resubmit. I'll be back to see you gentlemen and ladies. Hopefully, within two weeks or three. When is the next meeting?
We, we, we meet once a month, but the next, the mi- the next city council meeting, if you can always in public forum make a statement, but they meet.
Well, then I can't really go to the council meeting without stopping here again, no matter what.
Yeah, and I, okay, that, that won't help you, I, I.
Yeah.
Your, your conversations with Cindy, I think. All heads, you know, putting everybody's brains together and saying, how do we make this work? I think that's gonna produce the most fruit. If there's a way and a possibility of getting it to us.
So that would be your recommendation to your planner, is to try to put something together with us that we can make work.
Well, I, my recommendation would be for you to step back from this proposal and get together. With the city planner and try to devise some way of doing it that still fits what we're doing. In the bigger picture, so that we're not stuck with making a decision today that will affect the entire city. That's our point. So yes, I think the biggest thing is you'll find out better parameters as to how you should proceed. After further conversations with your office.
And, and right now, this is also kind of a legal issue. I, you know, meeting just with Cindy, I would suggest both the attorneys are on the line too, that. Understand how this can be done from a legal perspective, um, so that would be my suggestion as well.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sure that we'll, yeah.
Yeah.
But I mean, we've got it, it starts right here with Cindy.
Sure.
Because her recommendation to the board.
Carries weight.
That's what you guys look at.
Sure, absolutely.
And Cindy's an expert at analyzing what our ordinances are and, and, and how we have to, what we have to follow, and that's, and. That's, we, we, uh, we look to her for, for that knowledge, so.
Yeah.
So a couple of questions, uh, the conditional use permit that we have right now, was for a storage shed.
The conditional.
For storage.
The, the existing one that's on the property is for a storage shed.
Okay. Does it change? I mean, is size and facilities locked in in your mind of what you want?
Our people laid it out, so all our equipment would fit in the building.
Okay.
Everything that's M E R. There may be a few items outside, I mean, I can't guarantee you, everything will be in every night.
That big back hole.
Pardon?
The big back hole couldn't fit.
They're never there. I mean, it's, it's there today, but it came in. Oh, and, oh, yeah, it'll all fit in there, but they're very rarely there. We don't bring them home. I mean, they stay on job sites.
Does office space need to be there?
Pardon?
Does office space, does office space change the structure?
If there wasn't office space in his proposal, would that change anything?
The biggest issue with the proposal. Is that it's not a house.
Okay.
Okay, right now, that's the biggest issue with the proposal.
The building would fit in the.
Well, I think, I think going, I think the biggest thing, and I think what we should accomplish here in the pretty short term future here. Is, is that we want to, uh. We wanna find out what, where John wants to go, if he wants to proceed or withdraw. Acknowledging that the four of us clearly want.
Can we order, please?
More information on this as to how it works. And then restructure some sort of a proposal that we can actually take into consideration that will fit. What we're trying to do here. And if that means rezoning, if that, we can't, we don't recommend anything to her. I mean, she's basically the woman, and she knows the rules, but. I think to your point, as a business owner. We all want the city of Credit River to thrive. We do.
Yeah.
Every one of us here, we all residents here. And we just wanna make sure that it's done in an orderly way. Not that yours isn't. We're not saying that. You're in a great location there, and with commercial next door, it can probably, some way. As you spoke of, if this could go here, but it's not something we can take into consideration tonight. And it'll be something that is outside of the proposal that's in front of us tonight. But I think it's important to know that all of us want. The city of Credit River to continue to grow in an organized fashion, and you're a long-term person here with a great track record, and we really appreciate that, honor that.
Look, you need commercial in the city. I guess I've never been in one where there hasn't been commercial.
Sure, yeah, yep, and that, that's our key too. We all understand that too, and we wanna make sure that as we move ahead. It's in a well-organized ordn- you know, uh, pro- process that we can all, that everybody can support. And so, John, at this point in time, where do you wanna, are you, what would you like to do?
Well, I'll withdraw both applications.
Sure.
And I'm gonna resubmit. I'm gonna get together with Cindy. I'll call you in the morning. We'll set up a time where we can actually meet. And we'll put a meeting together, we'll try to figure something out. As soon as we get it ready. I'll re, I, I mean, the application, all my earnest, my ask for a role in place. It's a matter of. Which I actually have here, just reapplying with a new application, but we've gotta use a little different direction, and I knew that coming.
Sure.
Hey, John. Cindy, Cindy may need more time than like tomorrow morning to, because we, we. Okay, yeah, okay, I just wanna make sure I give you enough time to.
So if, if that's the idea of what we wanna do, um. Withdrawals of applications do need to come in writing, so what I would ask is that you table both of the applications tonight.
Okay.
And then John would have to send us something in writing withdrawing both of the applications.
Are you willing?
Get a new application.
Will you withdraw the ones that you submitted? Okay, in writing?
Have to do it, yeah, I'll send her an email.
But like I said, you, you still need, you need to table tonight, and then. Because in the event that, for whatever reason, he didn't submit the written withdrawal, then we would take it up again next month.
Right, so here's, here would have been my question to Bob, if he was here tonight, do I need to have a second public hearing? To talk about the conditional use permit, if John is withdrawing that.
Yes, we advertised it and you're still gonna end up having to table it, so we will.
Got it, we'll do that, okay.
Give that opportunity.
So we've, we've got thirty days, is that what you're telling me? Before the next meeting. I have to come back to this forum again.
No, so. It just can't be a verbal withdrawal?
No, I understand that part of it, but we have to come back to the planning commission with a new application.
Ultimately.
Change that. It won't be a new application, it will be a changed application. And I, I don't know if you're gonna see it in a week. My schedule and hers may not meet right away, we'll probably have something get together, and it may take some time to figure this out.
Correct.
I don't have a lot of time, but we'll do the best we can, but it will have to come back here.
Correct.
Opportunity is gonna be roughly thirty days.
Yes.
And what do we have to republish?
We would, we would have another.
We'll likely have to republish.
And what's the time?
Ten days, isn't it ten days before the?
Yeah, but I need more time than that to get it in the paper and stuff, so, um, I'll have to look that up, we'll talk.
Just send me an email of the, of what we have for final dates, and that's all I need.
And just a few thoughts, do we know, I mean, do we have, in the communications you two have had, do we have the, here's the. Five, ten, fifteen points we have to address? I mean, so you can be planning those things.
We, we know what the points are, we've just not been able to address them.
Okay.
And we'll put them together, I mean.
Good.
I'll work with you any way I have to, but I have to know what I have to do.
Sure.
Cause I really echo Steve's, I mean, we wanna make it work. The last thing we wanna do is. Uh, have an industry leave, a business leave that's been a, a successful business all these years.
My house is only a mile away, and you can take my grandchild's calendar and you can literally walk it.
Right, sure.
And like I said, I could leave, I don't wanna leave.
And we don't, we don't wanna deny anything, residents, when they ask for things, we don't wanna deny, we just have to make sure we follow our ordinance, part of the law.
I've been in this situation many times, not myself, but the husband, but I, I understand the process completely.
Okay.
All right, thank you, John. Mr. Messenbrink, I'm, I'm a lifelong resident too, and I, I wanna tell you, I support. Um, economic development as well, and I just appreciate your willingness to talk through this, to come to the best resolution. For this property, but also for the long term.
Yeah. Well, I, and I mean.
We appreciate that.
We wanna stay here.
Okay.
We wanna stay prosperous and grow with the city, so.
Great. All right, thank you, thank you, John. Can I get a motion to close tonight's public hearing related to the, uh, text amendment?
So moved.
Motion by Amy is her second.
Second.
Second, I, Abe, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing non-motion to close, this public hearing is carried. Uh, the next public hearing we have is related to the conditional use permit for the property located at seventy seven sixty five one hundred seventy fifth street. Cindy, do you have anything else before I open up the public hearing? We really talked about most of it.
No, I don't think it's necessary. I mean, I'll just say that generally, that this is a proposal for an approximately twenty four thousand square foot building. Um, apparently lost the feed, so I can't show it to you anymore, but. Um. The building is proposed to sit near the front of the lot, and, um, as you know, we don't have engineering for it yet, so.
Okay.
But that's certainly something that can be done, it just.
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Messenbrink, you've made a lot of statements. Did you wanna make any statements before I open up the public hearing?
We'll have another opportunity, there's, I mean, we have to have a path there.
Sure.
Soon as we get the path, I think it'll be a lot simpler.
Okay, great. Then I'll open up the public hearing. This is a time for residents to provide comments pertaining to this proposed conditional use permit for seventy seven sixty five. One hundred seventy fifth street. Uh, we didn't receive any written comments related to this.
No.
Okay, is there any resident that, uh, wants to speak related to this proposal? Hearing, hearing none, uh, can I get a motion then to, uh, close this public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Steve, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing non-motion to close the public hearing is carried. Okay. So I think we're done with the public hearings. We will table what I, what I heard us saying, we're gonna table.
We need you to make a motion on each of them to table them to your.
Yeah, so, um, I'll ask for a motion first, let me make sure I.
Can we make one motion for both?
No.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I would move to table. The amendment of text of zoning ordinance related to permitting, permitting businesses in residential zoning districts until our next meeting.
Okay, very good. Amy, Amy has a motion to do that, uh, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Abe, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing non-motion to approve the, uh, table, tabling the text amendment that was proposed. Uh, the next, uh, item that we wanna table is the, uh, uh, conditional use permit for that location. Do I have a motion to table that? Motion by Abe, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Steve, all in favor to table that, uh, proposal, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing non, motion passes. Since we have no other business, I think we can, um, does anyone else have anything else to say related to this? You, John, you have my commitment that we will get things done for you, that, under, under our rules, under our ordinances, we have to change, and we'll do our best to do whatever we can. Uh, any other comments by anyone? Okay, can I get a motion to close tonight's hearing, or close tonight's meeting? Motion by Steve, is there, is there a second? Second by Abe, all in favor, all in favor, uh, motion to adjourn, uh, it's, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? Motion passes. Thank you everyone for coming tonight. Have a nice evening. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Thank you everyone for coming tonight. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.